I'm calling this meeting to order. This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and in each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson? Mrs. Deluna?
That didn't work.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Lancy? Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Napoloni?
Here.
Mr. Capello?
Here. At this point, we have a need for an executive session. Mr. Lur? For all? Sir Lur, would you care to move us in?
I move to continue the executive session. In accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the purpose of this closed session will be to discuss negotiations, legal, and personnel issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And just a reminder, put on your mics, please, when you're speaking.
Little update on our projects. The Valley View roofs is almost complete, which is a good thing. The Lakeview materials have been delivered. The Valley View oil remediation will start by August 1st and finish by August 30th. The Valley View Media Center, if you want to check it out after, is starting to come along. The flooring is done. You can see the air conditioning units have been installed. They're not finished. And we are still moving forward with that project. It's been painted, it looks very nice. The Lakeview water infiltration project is pretty much done. There's part of the quote on your agenda today for the bus garage also includes the interior water infiltration remedy, too, to seal the interior. The window project that we talked about, we have somewhere around 50 windows in the district that don't open properly. That's going to get started this week. The lead, I shared the lead water report with you, and we are going to move on having at least two bottle filling stations in each school that will be hooked up to electric, so it'll be chilled and filtered bottle filling stations. And we are going to move along with replacing any water fountains that were hit, that were, that came up as elevated levels of lead. They'll be replaced with new filtering, filtered water filters, water fountains. In this building, in the, in the light skills room, which is like a home ec. room, there are four sinks, they'll have filtered water also. And also, all the sinks will be replaced. They're, they're very old and crumbling, so while we're doing it, we're going to replace the sinks. And, like I said before, we're going to do the two bottle fillers in each building, even Lakeview, so that everybody, every, every building will have a couple of those bottle fillers in the building. We will also remove some of the water fountains that are not needed anymore, according to our, our architect's plans. Not all of them, we're not going to go to just the minimum amount, but, but the ones that were, that are in disrepair or anything like that, that aren't being used, will be removed. If we have a place where there's three fountains, we're going to go down to two, most likely, according to the plan, and we'll use some type of a stainless steel or laminate blank to fill in behind them. If you can picture, if you have two water fountains like this, you know, when you have a third, you're going to have a big hole. So we're going to put like a laminate behind it to make it look a little bit, you know, a little bit better than just patching it.
That draws real.
How is that helping? Is that helping everybody?
That's scalped.
There we go. That's a quality drawing for you, too, by the way. So that's the lead plan. The bus garage contractor's on the agenda for, for tonight, and it's the same person that did the work at Lakeview. He's done a great job, and his price came in well below the other, the other quotes that we got. This is something I started last year, I'd like to go over it again. I've shared it with you this week, with the Board of Education, but I figured I would highlight a few of our schools, that we should be proud of our students. These are all the students, I shared with you a list of all students who graduated from Morris Hills or Morris Knowles, who live in Denville. So if they went to Del Barton, or they went to the county VOTAC, that, that's not in here. So anybody who went to Morris Hills or Morris Knowles, I shared with you a list. I figured I would just point out a couple, I thought there were some interesting ones on here, like Alabama, Brown, Cornell, Cal Poly, Florida State, Georgia Tech, LSU, Maine, Michigan, Michigan State, NJIT, Northeastern, Ohio State, Oregon State, Penn State, Pitt, Providence, Wrestler Polytechnic, Savannah College of Art Design, Rutgers, Scranton, Seton Hall, Stevens Institute of Technology, UC Berkeley, UCLA, University of North Carolina, University of Southern California, Utah, Vassar, Villanova, Virginia Tech, Wake Forest, Yale, and Tulane. I pointed out just a few, there's a lot more. There's the Maclure States, there's this college county, county college, Morris, the College of New Jersey's on there. We have some great institutions that our kids are getting into. I'd like to think that we do contribute to that, even though they move on to the high school. We send them off into the high school with a, with a strong foundation for success when they get up there. I also want to talk a little bit about my, the last miracle, I included that in there. That was about revenue. This was recurring revenue, not new revenue. And I, this is only money that was received, that's why, if you see the Yankees camp, that was money we received last summer. So it's money received between 7:01 and 6:30. Damaris verified all this, and I'm putting that on the agenda for tonight. Committee discussion. So, this is a tough time of year for committees, obviously, with all the meetings and people's vacations. I would like, we would like to do this, if possible. We'd like to have curriculum on August 2nd at 5:30 PM, and we'd like to do operations August 15th at 6:15. That would be prior to the Board of Education meeting. I know it's, I know we don't normally like to do it that way, it's just, it's a difficult, it's difficult to get a time when everybody's available. How do, how do those sound for you? August 2, curriculum?
I won't be in there.
You'll be gone, okay.
It doesn't stop.
Do you have, do, do we want to, I know you're going away right after that, so it's going to be tough.
As long as you have two of them.
I forgot which week. I'll be here.
I can, I can take that.
Would it be better, would it be better, no, actually, because you won't be there. I was going to suggest doing the curriculum meeting on the night of the board meeting, too, but, but Sandy won't be there.
That's our goal, and that's our goal night.
Yeah, it's the goal night. So, we can go forward with August 2nd and August 15th? The operations committee people have anything to say about the August 15th at 6:15?
I think I'll be back in town. I know, Dino had an email on the, the August 20th meeting, I believe that's when it was.
August 15th.
15, yeah, I think I'll be back in town, but I think this is the first week of August I'm gone. Of course, carry on without me if I'm not.
All right, so we'll, I'll, I'll put it out to you Friday, that's August 2 and August 15. And we'll, if we, as long as we can get two people to attend each, that'll be fine. And I'm just happy to also announce that our personnel hiring process for the year has gone very well. We're very happy with what we did. We've recruited heavily, we've gone out and looked for people, not just waited for people to come to us. We started the process very early in the spring. We have one opening left. We hired about 20 people. It's been a, it's been a big job, but it, to me, it's our second most important thing, after keeping people safe and secure. So it's something that we put a lot of time and energy into, and we're happy to say that we only have one opening left. I know, I know that it was the norm a little bit to wait into the summer to do these things, but now we've tried to do it in the spring, even though we have one spot open. That's it for me.
Very much.
Dr. Callus, whenever you're ready. Sure. I would also like to report out on my final miracle, which was to, to measure the proficiency of our first and second grade students on their narrative writing tasks. We checked the data from last year. We did the same tasks last year, and we had 77% of our students meet the proficiency goal. So this year, we upped that to see if we could get 85% of the students to meet that proficiency goal. The students write a narrative in the fall, and then rewrite another narrative, and it's scored in the spring. It's scored on language conventions, organization, and development, and then those points are converted to the same scale that the state uses for its assessment. So it, although a student may not, may get more points, but may not have enough to move to another proficiency level. So although all students are probably getting more points, our goal was not to just get more points, that they actually either needed to be proficient, or to move a whole proficiency level. So, the data that you have on the back of the goal, the first two charts really are just background information, because they don't particularly lend itself directly to the goal, because the goal was how many students either move up a level, which is physically counting a number of how many are actually getting the goal, or actually moved up one level. So either a two or a three, or they went from a zero to a one, or a one to a two. Well, two, that would be a proficient. So the first, the September baseline data that's provided is just to give you an idea of where our students were in, in the fall, and then where they ended in June. So you can see a significant number of first graders really are, have low writing skills, which would be expected, and that they, in huge numbers, move up. And then second grade, probably pretty steadily, second grade is moving into the different categories. The data that actually addresses the goal is the bottom chart, which indicates, I just physically counting the number of students that were assessed. If they moved in or moved out, their data was not included. So it may not be exactly how many students are in that grade. They had to either get a two or a three on the rubric, or they had to go up one level. So it's how many, the physically counting how many students met that goal, how many did not, and what the percentage was. And so then we took the 331 students assessed, I divided the 288 that met the goal by the 331, and that was 86%. So we just made, we made above that goal, less than I was counting every student. But, to go from 77 to 86, it was really exciting. The teacher, it's different people that are collecting the data and scoring, so you do have some checks and balances, because you have double scoring by teachers. Then it goes into the data, and the principals and myself do the, well, the principals do the data analysis, and then I do the counting. So, you know, we physically have three levels of checking the data, so it's nice to see that we have a significant increase in that area. Two other items. Some great news, the park scores have come back. It's way before last year, so last year we got them at the end of November. I already have the individual student scores, although they're initial and embargoed, which means we cannot release them at this time. But it's exciting to see that we are moved in the right direction. And soon, we will receive the parent scores that we will be able to mail out, and then be able to publicly announce our percentages for each of the grade levels. Apparently, at some point this week, the parent portal was opened up for about a 10-hour window, and some of the student class assignments may have been seen, but I just want to warn parents, those are not necessarily the correct classroom assignments, because at that point we were just playing with the system to start putting kids into numbers, but not necessarily the actual classroom they will be in. So, once the parent portal is ready, it will be opened in August. And this concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Is there a way we can avoid that? I mean, is Genesis not lend itself to kind of having stuff, you know, be hidden until it's ready to put live, or? Because this isn't the first time we've had a few of something like this.
Yeah, what happened was, the, there's a, there's a spot in the demographics that our tech people didn't realize was going to be pulled into the report card. The only way you could see it was by looking at a blank report card, it would say it on the bottom. So, the report card was turned off, then it was turned back on. When it was turned back on, it really, there was nothing in the report card, except for this one thing. So, the, the problem was really just not, we, that field should not have been rolled over from year to year. So, when we do that, when we do the year-end rollover, that, we will not have that feature be rolled over. And, we have to remember, though, we, we are using more of the functions. Before we had Genesis, we didn't use, we really almost used nothing in the elementary school for Genesis, only attendance. We didn't do anything. So, there was a little bit of growing pains with, with some of those things, and it's not, not that we don't want to be perfect, I mean, I get it. We always want to, we want to strive to make sure everything's done correctly. And, and we will, we always will. And, and as a matter of fact, Cindy, our tech director, was in Genesis training all day today, off-site. So she's working on all that, and it's, there's, there's little glitches that do come up like that, and the good thing is, it was very responsive. As a matter of fact, somebody texted me at dinner, when I was with my wife, for, for our anniversary, and I just took a screenshot of what they texted me, sent it to Cindy, and, and a few minutes, it was disabled. So, again, we're, we're always going to strive for perfection, and do it, do it as the best we possibly can. And I think when we do explore, and expand, and do some things in Genesis that we never did before, we can anticipate that there could be some possible problems with it as we go along. Good thing is, there's nothing super serious when it comes down to the problem. It wasn't like we put out any, you know, confidential information or anything out to the public. It wasn't, it was just a, a minor thing that we did, and we will definitely work hard to not have that happen again.
Thank you. Damaris, any business administrator comments tonight?
I just want to remind everyone that the petition filing deadline is July 25th at 4:00 PM. I will be updating the website tomorrow with the application, but if anybody's interested, they can also go into the Morris County website, and they will find an application there.
This is for running, running for the Board of Education.
And we have two positions open, us, for this year.
There's two positions open, but there's only one person running. I will not be running again. I know Don has already put in his paperwork, so it should be smooth sailing for whoever wants to try to run for the board.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up for public comment at 7:52. If you have anything you'd like to discuss, or ask about, you can approach the podium and sign in. Seeing no one, I will close the public portion also at 7:52 PM. And we can move on to our old business. Mr. Napoloni, would you care to take us through old business?
Unless there's an objection, I'd like to move items A, B, and C as a block.
I will second.
The treasurer reports, board secretary reports, some meeting result, or meeting minutes, as well as some enrollment, medical office reports, and so on. Hit report in there as well.
Do you have any questions, or comments on these? If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Lancy?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes on A and B, no on C.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Moving on to new business. Yes.
I think you were asked to adjourn on the new business.
You are correct, thank you. I'd like to amend my vote to yes, except for on the June 20th meeting. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Lancy.
New business, personnel. If there are no objections, I would like to move items 1 through 11 as a block, and invite you to take note that we're adding item 1Z from the addendum that was sent out this afternoon.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass.
So that's the board, the normal agenda plus Z on the addendum, right?
Correct, 1Z, which is the addendum for Tarantino at least.
Can we talk about the new business?
Sure.
So, yeah, can we get, I guess, a, a little background on the, 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 the thing?
This is the thing, this is the thing that we talked about with, with school boards when, when our representative was here, and we were talking about how it shouldn't be the superintendent dealing directly with school boards, it should be somebody from the inside. It's called the internal coordinator. As a matter of fact, I received an email from her today, asking me when would be a good time to meet with the strategic plan internal coordinator. And I said, "We're just getting the job description approved today." So, is there any?
I'm confused, because I spoke with our junior school board person at length about the strategic planning process, and she said every district does something different. Some districts have the coordinator, the district superintendent, some districts, when you come to them, it's superintendent, the DA, and a couple of board members. It's all different things, but you don't have to hire, create, set an position for the council.
And, yeah, that's fine. I remember when we talked about it, and this was during the budget cycle, and also with the school board's person, this came up then, and this is the thing that we put in the budget. It's maybe a small stipend for somebody to run the strategic planning, putting, you know, running the website, putting together all the information, coordinating all the teams with, with the school board's person. And I remember how we were talking about it at the time with school boards, and they were talking about how it is important that it's not just the superintendent doing all this, because it, I think it's got the perception that it's the superintendent's plan, it's supposed to be the community's plan.
See, I, I remember that discussion being more about how it was presented to the public, how the meetings were kind of run and organized. So I'm not, I just don't remember that, this being kind of a key piece of it.
Yeah, I agree. I didn't understand that. When we talked about it back a bunch of time, I thought the reason why we weren't internally running our own strategic plan, which is what the two previous strategic plan I've been involved with, with Denville, were run by our superintendent. I understood that you didn't want to run it, and that's why you were hiring the junior school boards to do this. I didn't realize we were then going to hire, create a site and position for somebody within the district, who wouldn't make the school boards to set up and run the meetings. So I want to be supportive of this, because I did not understand that at budget time, and I will not support it, because we didn't know what we were going to do.
Didn't we, but I thought we, we talked about this during the budget, and we, I don't remember what the amount was, $5,000 or $10,000 that we put aside for it, too?
We put $10,000 aside for the entire strategic planning process. This particular person's job is going to be somewhere in the $2,000, $2,500 range, something like that, out of the $10,000. It comes out of that $10,000 budget.
Yeah, I mean, I thought I remember, remember discussing it, I thought we, you know, the idea of doing it not just over a single year, doing it over two years, was to make sure we did it right, and there was a whole process that we had sort of talked through in regards to school boards and the whole thing. So I'm not, I mean, I, obviously, you can vote the way you like, but I thought we had discussed all this already.
No, we discussed hiring an outside source, which had much debate over the cost of, you know, who was going to do it during the process, who needed help. I have come to terms with the fact that we're going to bring in an outside group to run our strategic planning, but I don't see why we need to then spend another $2,000, $2,500 to coordinate.
But isn't this part of, isn't this part of the $10,000 you were talking about, Steve?
Yes, yes.
So this is?
You recall, I never approved spending $10,000 on strategic planning.
But this, but this isn't any more than we already budgeted for?
No.
This is inclusive of what we spent time and, and, and energy discussing and debating during the budget time.
I think it's not just what you're responsible for, you just have to.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear on this. This is, this particular plan that we're going to develop with the help of school boards, and with the help of our internal coordinator, is the thing that will drive the district for the next five years, fiscally, educationally, in every aspect of all of our operations. So, I have to disagree that this is, wouldn't be worth the money. It's, if you think about it, if we spent $10,000 on strategic planning, that's $2,000 a year for a five-year plan. So, and it's also been a two-year goal that the board agreed to, actually, not, not agreed to, created. Created a goal of create a strategic plan in the first year, which is just ended on June 30th, was to actually plan on how to plan. Now we're at the time where we're ready to actually do the planning, and I've already been speaking with the school board's person, and she asked me about this today.
Oh, Charlene?
Yeah.
Peters.
So I guess, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm wrestling with is, how is it going to work? I mean, how, I read the job description for this person, but how is it going to work
on a day-to-day? Where does this person fit, in terms of between you and the school boards, and the process? How do you see it, I guess, maybe, is what I'm asking, for a little more narrative? How do you see, how do you see this person working?
It would, it would, the person would become more of the public face of this particular process, rather than having the superintendent be the public face of the process. That's what Charlene was, was driving at. Regardless of other districts may do that, and that, that could be the case. And also, if the board prefers to do it that way, I will be, I will take all, take this on. And it's not the fact that it's the work about it, it's the whole idea that when you have the superintendent being the, the public face of the whole thing, rather than a participant, it gives the illusion of the, of the planning process being the superintendent's plan. That's, that was, that's the thing that Charlene drove home with you at the time we were doing the, the actual goal setting. So, if, if the board decides that you would rather not do it this way, it's, it's a different way of doing it, but it's also in direct conflict with what Charlene already told us. Regardless of what other districts do, that's fine, but our consultant that we hire already told us, we should have somebody be the coordinator.
But it was Charlene that I spoke to at length about the way that school boards implement this typically. So, I would find it odd if she sat here at a meeting and told us, "We couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't, we have to, we have to," playing, she says they have absolutely no guideline for this.
Well, I just want to make sure that you are clear on what I said. I never said, "We had to." I said, "She recommended it." She did not, she never said, "You have to do it this way."
I'll have to go back and watch the, the.
But she definitely said, she definitely said, "I recommend that the superintendent," I, I mean, I'm surprised that the rest of the board doesn't remember this conversation. No, I remember. It was in public, and she said that we should not have the superintendent be the lead of this, because it seems like it's the superintendent's plan.
So I guess then it's just my misunderstanding. I thought it was literally school boards running the meetings, that's not having the superintendent be the face and the lead on it. It's not, not articulating and coordinating with school boards. When she stood here and explained that to us, it never, in the wording, did I hear the superintendent wasn't going to interface with school boards.
The superintendent interfaces with school boards, it's, and, and school boards does not run the, the thing, we do. They're our consultant, they guide us on how to do it. They, they give us the exercises, they help, they help plan it and do all that, but they don't.
They don't actually?
They're going to run, they're going to be like, kind of like a tag team with the other person. And also with Sandy and me and Damaris, all of us. So when it comes to fiscal things, the Maris will be the person. When it comes to educational things, it'll be Sandy will be the person. And, and it's like a team effort.
See, now I'm getting the feeling like what we were told, or at least what I understood, which I think sounds like what Ariana understood, was that it sounded like they were coming in, and they were running the meetings, they were running the show much more from a front-facing point, you know, aspect, and it sounds like they really, they really are.
I mean, they, they, I don't know how to word it.
We, we attended the VOTAC, or the Morris County School of Technology strategic plan, and both the, the coordinator and Charlene were the ones that stood up there, and then they would, they both were talking to the group and leading the group, and if it seemed like it was a, a direction that Charlene needed to move the group, then she would step in. They just were both working it together.
So new business, school technology, the same scenario, they've got a coordinator, and then they've got school boards overseeing it, or?
They had a person from the, from the, from their, their district that was leading it, it wasn't the superintendent. Superintendent's more of a participant in the process, rather than the leader of the process. Same thing with, if any board members are on it, they're more of a participant in the process, rather than the leader of it.
See, I personally like that. I like the idea of you not being a participant in the process. I just didn't realize we had to pay a stipend to somebody to fill that role.
But just to be clear, this isn't in addition to anything that we've already But just to be clear, this isn't in addition to anything that we've already budgeted?
No.
Yeah, I know, just want to make clear, this is not something different. This is what we spoke about, whether they stood or not understood, and then also budgeted for. This is not going outside that budget.
Do we have a person ID'd for this position?
We've, we've been toying with some ideas, Sandy and I. We, um, we want, we would put it out to everybody and see who applied. We'd like people with administrative backgrounds, because there's some administrative things that they're going to have to do.
Would certainly be a good leadership development. Uh, so the, the other question I had, the stipend is negotiable, do we have a, and maybe, you can't answer it tonight, but is there a cap on that, where we would, you know, how much we would go up to?
I would see this thing being somewhere in the $2,000 range as the stipend.
Not to exceed, say, $2,500?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
So you're looking to have one of our current administrators do it?
I mean, it doesn't have to be an administrator, there's no rule that says that, it has to be somebody with administrative experience.
I, I only say that because in talking with Charlene, she said, in some districts, the community came and asked for administrators not to be even participants in the groups. So what if we end up on our first meeting, and that's what participants say, and then you have an administrator in it? It could just keep snowballing.
But Charlene said that you shouldn't have-
No, she said she did one in a town, and she named the town. And at the end of the first meeting, the parents came up to her and said, "We'd like to have these discussions without the building administrator in the room, that we're discussing what we see as the pitfalls in the district."
But then she didn't suggest that the superintendent or administrator shouldn't run the whole show?
Well, I think that's different. You're, if you're superintendent, and you're not sitting in the group, and it's not your building, it's not your, you're not the one overseeing the building, whether discussing things that happened or didn't happen.
Just like everything else, I mean, this is my recommendation for how I think we should do it. If we decide not to do it that way, we'll figure out another way.
Yeah, I, I remember, you know, sorry, I remember every detail, but when we talked about bringing the, the outside consulting room for this, I, you know, I wasn't for it in the beginning, and I had, took the time to call Colleen to discuss the pluses and the minuses of bringing outside consultants. She, she talked to me about a, a more objective method of getting the input from the public, rather than a, you know, a top-down scenario for putting together the strategic plan. So after talking to her about, you know, what they do in other districts and everything, you know, I changed my mind. It seemed like, like a good idea to, and I thought the money was well-spent, so I changed my mind and supported it. This sounds like a good idea to, so.
Any other comments or questions?
People don't like it, they can vote no. They like it, they can vote yes.
Always. Any other comments or questions on this?
Yeah, I got a question about the supporting documents for number three. Excuse me. Under, uh, the recurring, uh, recurring, uh, revenue, there's something under here called Denville Court Vandal Settlement. Are we really going to have somebody paying us $200 a year?
Until they're, until it's paid off.
How, how long is that going to be?
Uh, it's going to be a while. It wasn't a huge amount of vandalism, just to the front, the front entrance here, is that tire mark that's there? It's not a, it's not over yet.
Okay. Um, is that revenue, or is that restitution? I mean, I know it's only $200, it just seems, and it doesn't affect the overall amount, it doesn't affect whether or not the goal is met. But a vandal settlement seems more of a court settlement, rather than revenue. Uh, it's like restitution, rather than revenue.
Well, since I caught the person and did all the detective work on it, I figured I should put it down as one of my, one of my things. Yeah, and it's money, it is money coming into the district that we wouldn't have had.
Anything else on items one through 11? If not, I will ask for roll call please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Okay, this is going to be complicated. I will vote yes, but I am going to abstain from three and six, and I will vote no on ten.
Next, no intent. Yes on everything else?
Mrs. Lindsay?
I'll vote no on ten and yes on one.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Uh, yes on everything except number 10, I'll abstain.
So number 10 is, what, three to two?
The mic's not here.
No, you got threes?
Yeah, you need four.
On to instruction and program. Mrs. Monty, would you care to move a student?
If no one has any objections, I'd like to move motions one through four as a block. For discarding books, we do actually have two field trips, one for the, I think maybe of the both for the summer, workshops, and do you want to speak a little bit about what, I don't even know how to pronounce it. Edgeseer? Thank you.
Edgeseer is the program, an online program that we use to offer high school level courses that really are only for one or two students, that we don't want to, one, the high school, send them to the high school because the schedule doesn't match up, but also it's not large enough to have a full class. So they actually attend like a Spanish one or French one class, and get extra help from the teacher, but do an online through Edgeseer.
So it's French two and Spanish two?
That's correct. And this year we had one French two student. So we anticipate that we might have two French two students next year, and one Spanish two. At this moment, that's about what we're looking at. We don't know how many, yet.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Not roll call please?
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yep.
Mr. Capello?
On to policy. Mr. Luer, would you care to move a student to policy?
Thank you. I would like to move item one, under policy. We are looking at the first reading of acceptable use of computer networks, computers and resources, and the second reading and adoption of, uh, 4125, employment of support staff, and 5512, P and R, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Uh, the number for the acceptable use is 2361.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Monty?
I don't know if the acceptable use was spoken about in technology or where it was, and in reading it, I think it's the regulation that has the actual form that I assume will be sent home on the first day of school, or in the first week of school packet for parents to sign.
It's going to be, it's going to be discussed, too.
It's going to be discussed where I'm back to school, right?
It's going to be discussed with the parents, because prior to getting your Chromebook, the parents will have to come to a meeting and sign off.
Okay. I was going to say, how are we going to make sure that all the forms come back? But if you're going to make them sign it before they get a Chromebook, I guess we'll know.
Yep.
And we, and we review the process in technology.
I would like to, uh, make it clear that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if you are logged into, uh, if you are logged, if you are, if a child is using their parent's home computer for some reason, and they are logged into, uh, the, they are logged into their email account, or they're using some kind of school resource, uh, they, the school will have access to anything that is done in that, not just that browser session, but any browsers, but any browser sessions of that particular type that are happening at the same time. Am I correct about this?
If you're logged into a Chrome account, into a Google account, with a, with a Denville Board of Education log on, doesn't matter what computer or device you're on, the school district could, I'm not saying will, but could find out the different sites you're on, look at your history, find out things like that. But we have that already, though. That's nothing to do with it now. I mean, anybody who's signed on any device, anywhere, with a, with a Denville account, it's a Google account, so it's trackable.
But the, I think the conversation in committee was because of the, the GoGuardian technology, it's now more accessible to us, or potentially more accessible to us. We have, we have more ability to get at it.
I don't know.
At least that's what-
I'm not sure.
At least that's what, again, at least that's what-
I don't know, I don't know how you would go about getting the information from Google, either. I know, I know if it would go, with GoGuardian, that's the point of it. So yes, with the GoGuardian, on the devices that we have, there'll be a program called GoGuardian on it, that will track and warn us if somebody's doing something that's not educational, but, but dangerous, too. Something like that.
We, we had a long discussion in committee about the fact that this kind of extends beyond just the device, extends to the account. So, and that's what Dave's point was, is that-
It's not just the, it's not just in the building, it's not just when you're in the building, using the building resources, it's not when you're just on, when you're, excuse me, it's not just when you're on your Chromebook. It is, is say, your daughter forgets her, forgets her, uh, Chromebook at school, wants to log on to mommy or daddy's computer to do, to do something, the school now will have the ability to look at what's going on, on the parent's computer.
Well, it's not on GoGuardian, though.
Am I, am I wrong about this?
It's what's opened up in, under that account.
So you have, I'm not following-
So if you were browsing, so if I opened up my Denville account, and was, and were doing it at home, and I was shopping, or watching YouTube or anything, they could see what I was doing on my Scolus Denville.org account. They can see what sites I've been on.
If you remain logged in?
Yes.
If you log out, then no.
Then no. Yes.
So I log in through Google Chrome and open up my email account to do some work, and-
Or look at the shared, or look at the shared drive.
Document share, or whatever, and then I open up another tab on Google Chrome, and I go shopping?
Then we'll know that, what sites you went to. We know what sites.
Or somebody sits down in your house and opens up a tab and does it. Absolutely, that's the point. People should be aware of that.
YouTube, that kind of stuff.
I think you should correct one thing you just said, which is, you said, open up your email account. So I think the distinction should be that it's not your account, it's the district account provided to you.
I understand, you're right. Okay, so my Denville, my Denville-
If you open the Denville browser-
A Denville account. I'm just, I'm trying to figure it out, because I don't open a Denville browser. I go to Foxfire, Chrome, whatever all those-
But when you log on-
Whatever all those things are.
Depends what account you log on.
And then I log into Denville.org to read mail, most of the time in my case as a board member. But as a student, I know my student did document sharing and things like that, so he's on, working with another student, they open up another tab to do some research, and take all their information from Wikipedia that they're not allowed, or whatever. You're saying every other tab on the same browser that I'm logged into a Denville account is then-
In theory.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, if you open up another version of the browser, it's, it will have that information as well, correct?
As in if I have two windows open?
You mean another version, another tab?
Another, not just another tab, but you click, you click on the icon again, and you have a whole nother, a whole nother window open. Not just another tab, a whole nother window.
Depends who you're logged in on.
Say, say you're using Google Chrome, and you are logged in on your Denville account, you minimize that one, you open a new one, that information will still, will also be accessible, correct?
But if I open up Internet Explorer?
Yeah, as long as you don't, I mean, if you log out, or you log into your personal account, or something like that-
Then it won't.
Then it won't, because you're on your own, you're on your personal Google account.
No, I'm not talking about opening a new Google account, I'm talking about just opening another instance of that browser.
Yeah, you can still track it.
Sure, as long as you're logged in-
So is that clearly, I, when I read the policy, I wasn't reading with an eye to that, and I didn't come away with that knowledge.
Well, that, that was, we had a long discussion about making sure that that was extremely clear in the policy, also extremely clear in the presentation that's being, that's going to be done, um, and everywhere else possible, that that really needs to be clear, because it is a big change in terms of what people, I think, are, we, nobody would think of that unless you really were sat down and just explained to you.
And I don't think the current, the policy, as we received it, I don't think it makes that sufficiently clear.
I would agree, because I read it and did not come away with that knowledge.
Okay, why don't you all, anybody who has questions, comments, concerns with that, email me what your thoughts are on that policy, since it's a first reading? As long as you get it to me, and it's ready to go on the, on the August 15th one, we have no problem. If, if people don't tell me until August 15th, then we do have a problem, because it won't be approved, and then we, obviously it puts all the progress that we have made on hold.
And, and if I may, that, what you're describing, which is, Ariana, just so you know, that scenario is in effect today?
I understand that.
Okay.
Because I happen to-
Not that I disagree, I think I'm the one that brought it up during the meeting. Um, the, my point, the point being that it has nothing to do with the Chromebooks or anything like that. At the moment, we're currently using district providing emails-
Yeah, no, and I think it's a good thing to make people aware of it, because I know, um, two people with students in other high schools, that they got into trouble this year because of stuff that the district actually did see, when they were opening stuff on their, um, using the district's account, or however you want to say that. So I don't think that they realized it was covered in their, the students, the parents, anybody. So I think we should, you know, at least try and make people aware.
And to your point, Dave, I mean, you're right, in the sense that, yes, it's, all that information is being upstream to some Google server somewhere, and nobody's, no human is ever going to look at it. My concern is that because of GoGuardian, the information is now being brought kind of one step closer to us in terms of accessibility. So I want everybody to be clear about, about that.
Oh, I agree, I'm, yeah, like I said, I, I agree. But I just want to make it clear that it's not exclusive to the Chromebooks, just so people understand that. That you're not using Chromebook, or just because, you know, this isn't, this isn't a caveat that should be known.
Yeah, this isn't new because of this next step in R.
That's all. Okay. Um, anything else on the other policies that we are, we are voting on for tonight? If not, roll call please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yeah.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Mrs. Deluna, would you care to move a student to finance, please?
Sure, there's no objection, I'd like to move on your agenda, the Finance Section D, items one through six, as a block. This covers, uh, item one, checklist, item two, no child left behind application, number three, IDEA application, number four, um, social skills services, number five, tuition placements, number six, rescinding the motion of the joint transportation agreement that we voted on last time.
I'll second.
Maybe, you know, Damaris, for those that weren't in the ops, the number six, why, just summarizing why we're removing, it was a great idea, most.
Lot of work, too. We did talk about that in private.
Yeah, I mean, in a generic sense, the family couldn't work it out, or-
This is the one in Rockaway?
Yeah.
Didn't work.
Oh, this is, oh, this is different, this is-
This is different, this is a child that was attending Rockaway Township for special needs, and is coming back to-
No, they moved.
It's moving, it's moving back to their own town, to Rockaway, actually.
So we were paying out of district tuition, the kid moved, but we already signed the contract with them, because we didn't know he was going to move.
Is now the appropriate time to ask about the transfer report, or should I have done that under the, under the Business Administrator's Report?
And now I got to see all the fines.
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering, because there's, there seems to be a lot more transfers this time than, there's like five pages?
End of the year.
It's, it's, that's just end of the year, that's not.
Usually, usually you will see typically more transfers in May and June because of the accounts of getting loan funds, and we had to cover the negatives, and depending on where we need the funds, we transfer the monies, and if we exceed the 10% limitation, we do request approval from the county business administrator and superintendent.
Yeah, it just, the, normally, it's significantly lower than this, so I was a little surprised when I saw the, when I saw the total of the transfers. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, excuse, if not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, except I need to abstain on motion number four.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass, you try to move us through Buildings and Grounds, and I don't think you can second your own motion, so somebody else will have to do it.
I'm going to move as a block, numbers 1 through 5, and as we covered in the work session here, these motions involve the dual use of educational space at our, at Valleyview, and we have, are going to rescind the June 13th motion on the Buildings and Grounds for Valleyview, the dual use of the library and computer lab, and Number 3, we're going to approve Patwood Roofing Company to complete change order Number 1 for Valleyview Lakeview partial roof project, in the amount of $400, they're going to remove the existing exhaust curb and re-roof the area. And we also have, again, Patwood Roofing, and Number 4, to do the partial roof project in the amount of $107,665 at Lakeview. And Number 5, Al Rick and Sons is going to complete the structural and trim work at the bus garage, previously discussed.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a question about Number 4.
Okay.
This seems like a fairly large change order, I seem to recall something in the, in one of the packets about we, we missed including this section in the original bid?
Correct.
How do we manage to do that?
It was a mistake.
Is there some way we can keep that from happening again? Because that's, I mean, it's, we, we've been sitting here saying, oh, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot less, it's going to be a lot less, and then.
It's still a lot less.
It's still a lot less, but it's not nearly as much less as it, as it was.
Still about $200,000 less to me budget.
I understand, it just seemed like, it's just a little bit of a shock to me to, instead of it being, what, 900,000, 950, it's going to be 1,050,000? Is that right? Something along those lines?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, it just, it's.
I mean, obviously, we don't want to make a mistake.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, I'm just wondering, is there some way we can keep that from happening?
No, what I'm saying is, obviously, I don't want to make a mistake. If you recall, you may not recall, because I don't know if you were even on there then, but there was, we had some personnel illnesses and things like that, where we had people out for a long period of time that were in charge of these kinds of things, and this one piece got skipped, so the good, the good news is, we're just adding it in. It's not costing us any additional money, like in other words, it should have been there already. So, the cost per square foot, even though it's higher, it makes it look higher, it really isn't higher, because it would have driven the cost per per square foot of the entire project up, because this section of the roof requires a different type of a system, and a crane, and a different crane operator, and it's a much more expensive area. But obviously, I mean, if we, if we go, all of us, we're sitting here, we're going to do a $900,000 project, if we skip $107,000 worth of it, and I come back to saying, I need, you know, $150,000 to fix this, because if a guy comes out just to do this, it's going to be $150,000. So, obviously, I don't want to miss stuff, we don't want to make a mistake, I'm just happy we caught it prior to the people being done, because it would have cost us at least $157,000 to do it, if we just had to have that done by itself.
I, I understand, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, and I'm also not trying to cast aspersions on anyone, I'm just wondering, now that you've explained it, there was illnesses and such, and just want, I was hoping there was a way we could keep it from happening again.
It's very frustrating to me, just so you know, I mean, I, I'm, I'm very happy that I found it, because it was, it would have been something that would have been pretty bad, that we would have had to partly pay 50% over the cost, but we found it, it's, it's definitely something that everyone involved knows my frustration of this, because we have, you know, have had discussions about it, and, and can I guarantee you that nothing like this will ever happen again? I would never say that. Can I say that, you know, obviously, we have to do the best we can to minimize it, of course, and, and I hope, I hope going forward, we do catch things like this prior to it going to bid. But we're getting, hopefully, we're getting things squared away in that department.
Thank you.
If not, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Napoloni?
Yeah.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
On to good of the cause. I'm skipping Transportation, because there's nothing there. On to good of the cause. Anyone have anything they'd like to start with?
Okay, all right. The motion that just didn't pass on the job description, as, since we don't have Mike here, I guess I'm looking at some of the job descriptions we created this year, and things like the green, and things like that. This is basically just scoping out what it would take to do the execution of the long-range plan, which we have to do by law. I mean, it could be any of the admins, they're going to be involved no matter what, but I think it would be just appropriate to offer a stipend in this case, but a stipend's really not mentioned in the job description, it's just scoping out what has to happen, which it seems like a pretty good idea on this, you know, I, I would like to think maybe we could revisit this, or reword it to your liking, to try getting some form of this passed tonight.
Well, what I get, you know, what, what my concern was, and the reason I abstained, was I felt like, in a way, we were kind of told two different things, and I'm not saying it's anybody's fault by any means, but it sounded like we were getting school boards in to kind of run this thing and take point, and they were going to manage it, and we were going to, as a district, kind of be behind the scenes, so it didn't appear like we were putting our finger on the scale. I didn't realize there was anything else that we needed to do to make that happen. So, and we seem to be getting kind of two different things from the conversations we've had with Charlene. Is it recommended? Is it required? Is it not? I'm fuzzy, and that's why I abstained. I don't abstain often, I abstained because I specifically did not feel comfortable enough to vote yes or no. So, that's where I'm at.
I, I mean, I can, I can definitely stress to everybody, this is not required. There's no requirement to have this, at all. I know we had this discussion at budget time, and we put that in there, but it's not a, it's not a requirement. I, I don't want anybody to think that in any way that they told us that we have to do it this way. They recommended that this is the way you do it, but didn't say that it's required.
Dino, are you questioning whether or not it's recommended?
I'm not really sure what it is at this point. I mean, like I said, I've, I've got, I've got two different versions of, is it recommended? Is it required? Is it necessary?
Well, who's saying is it required?
I don't know. I don't know who's saying it's recommended, or that it's even advised, I don't know. I'm, I've got two different kind of competing.
I know, you keep saying required, though. Who, I haven't heard someone say it's required. Who's saying it's required?
Okay, maybe requirements are wrong with that. You know, is it recommended? Is it necessary? Necessary, maybe, is it necessary?
So, I guess necessary, in my opinion, is a component of what we debated and spoke about, and then ultimately approved back during budget time, which was this all-encompassing strategic assistance, or strategic help, as part of the strategic planning. And the way I look at it is that there was a sum of monies that was included in achieving that board goal and required goal, as Barb mentioned, and if it included a stipend for somebody to be working on the inside as a liaison with the public, or it didn't, it's all-encompassing within that strategic plan. And so, I guess my, my question to you would be, are you objecting to the idea that you're, you don't think it's required, or are you objecting to the fact that you don't know?
I'm abstaining because, I'm abstaining because I don't know. I didn't feel like I have enough information to make a decision at that point.
Is the board comfortable with getting the answers and putting this back on in August? Or are we just dying this thing?
Well, what would satisfy, so you abstained, Dino, what would satisfy your need to make a decision, either yea or nay?
I guess I would like to understand a little bit more of the sales speak that we got about what we were getting from school boards. Again, I'm not casting any aspersions on anybody here in terms of how we did it, I'm more starting to think, well, we got, what we got from school boards is not exactly what we thought we were getting from school boards, in terms of the process. So, I, I think that's really where my problem is. So, I'd like to have a better understanding of what they're really going to do, and what they're really recommending we do.
Maybe Colleen should come back.
Charlene.
Charlene.
Charlene's going to be back here on August 15th.
So, maybe she could spend a few minutes talking about that. My, my, I mean, I think it's a good idea, but my concern is, is there something else around the corner that's going to pop up, from that, another, another need? From this? From that? This is just, this is just the budget we have. So, no, there's, that's it. I mean, we have budget. So, just to make it clear, we have a budget for their consulting fee, we had a budget, this is all, this was all into $10,000. The budget was for the stipend, and there's a budget for printing and distributing and making sure that whatever plan that we do devise and come up with as a team, that it's, it's lived, that we live by it, and it's out there, and it's marketed, not just basically in a drawer somewhere, as they were in the past here. I think you'll have a hard time finding, or anybody even knows anything about the strategic plans that were done before, because they're not, it's not out, it's not, it's not out like that thing right there. That's the kind of thing that we need to have out when we're done. A product, a finished product needs to be around the building and needs to be lived by.
To answer your ques, to answer your question, I'm, I'm, Juan, I'm more, I'd be more than happy to revisit this after finding out more information. That's my opinion.
I think if we, I think what was just mentioned would be a good idea, if we can get Charlene, Charlene? Charlene to spend a couple of minutes and go over what, excuse me, what she told Marianne and Steve, because listening, the reason I voted no is because listening to the two of them, there's two completely different things going on, and I can't, I'm not voting for something when there's that much confusion. So, I think if we spent five, 10 minutes talking with Charlene, I think that would be very, very helpful. Excuse me, when she, you said the 15th? That, that's our next meeting, right? I, I think it would be very useful if we could do that. I know it's another 10, 15 minutes on what is probably going to end up being a long meeting anyway, but I think we, that there's enough, there's enough interest in getting it passed that I think we should spend the time.
I just want to make sure everybody's clear, I never had a conversation, other than the conversation with Charlene about this, other than the conversation we had as a group. I did not discuss this with her outside of that group, that when she, when she explained to the group here, why the superintendent should not be in charge of the strategic plan.
And it sounds like we all just walked away with a slightly different perception of that, and we just need to clear it up. And I think we do that, and we move on.
So, I'll put it back on the agenda for the 15th, and you guys can have a discussion about it, and things like that, and you can decide, and then we'll, if, if it passes, we'll just appoint somebody in September.
Just a point of information, I got a call from Chris Jones, he's the New Jersey School Board's legislative person, he set up some meetings with Assemblyman Carroll, it's Assemblyman Carroll and State Senator Buco, July and August. He asked me if I'd like to attend, I said I would. I don't know if there's option of anybody else coming along, but if you'd like to, let me know. One meeting's July 25th, the other's August 7th. And also, if there's things you'd like me to bring up, if I'm going to be the one there, let me know. Should we talk about property taxes?
Well, that might be the first thing I might want to talk with those guys about.
Yes, absolutely. But should we talk a little bit about it tonight?
Yeah, I, I think that, if I may, I, I think there was a, a lot of hubbub about people's property taxes going up in spite of the fact that the impact from the township Board of Ed, as well as the township in itself, impact, it was minimal, but apparently, the Moore Hills regional impact to Denville in particular was more than significant. And I think there's a couple of points here, which is that, the assumption, of course, was that people were misled, and that's, I don't think that's true, at least from this table. I think that there was conversation, from my understanding, with people calling Town Hall and somebody talking about the school budget being tripled, and that's obviously not true. But I'll tell you, my frustration is a continued lack of consideration from the Moore Hills Regional District for either its tax base, which is the four sending districts, as well as the significant portion that Denville, or disproportionate amount that Denville pays to the district. And it's just absurd to me that, number one, we still have that, that funding mechanism that is not equal, and that we sit by and allow them to run roughshod on, on what they want us to do.
I don't think the high school has decided.
That's, that's fair, but.
I think it's like us complaining about the state. It's either the state or the county that sets up, probably the county.
But don't quote me, because I don't actually know, but I did speak to a couple of board members up at the high school during their budget process, and they said, it's because of the way it's allocated, and it's because Denville went through a reevaluation right now, so our tax base grew with everything that happened, and that they haven't gone through, the other sending districts haven't gone through a reevaluation recently, and it's my understanding that we were directed as a town to go through our reevaluation, and these other towns haven't been directed recently.
So, that's, I think that's part of it. I think the other part of it, and maybe my frustration, and, and part of this is direct knowledge, part of it is my impression at least, is, I think we go through, over the years, difficult, difficult discussions to minimize the impact to our, our district. I'm not sure that the high school goes through that as significantly as we do. My impression is that they go to whatever they can tax, and they move on. And at least, the very least, as a taxpayer, that's a, that's my impression, and it's frustrating. And especially as a Denville resident now, although my taxes weren't necessarily as impacted as some others, it's frustrating that that's the situation we're in with high school.
Well, to take the flip side of that, from the outside, there's people, obviously, who feel the same way about us, not coming to our meetings, not seeing the hundreds of hours that are spent, you know, going over every dime in the budget, you know, you can feel the same way.
I'm not, I'm not saying that part of it.
So, it's, it's a little bit from the outside, too, you, you.
I was going to say, considering their meetings are on our meeting nights, I don't think any of us have ever, I mean, it's been a couple of years since I've been to a high school meeting, when it wasn't on our meeting night, to see what they do or don't do. And yes, I think that is the impression, that they take the full.
They take the full 2% or plus?
Well, we took plus this year also.
But we take into consideration the impact to our taxpayers.
And they could have only taken plus if they didn't go to their full 2%, which is how we went to plus this year, because they, I mean, we had banked cap, which is how we were well over 2%. And we took that into consideration, we, this board took that into consideration when we passed our budget. I don't know how they could have gone over 2% if they go to 2% every year. It's the way it's allocated, as far as, and I'm not defending them, because I don't obviously serve on that board and don't understand their budget as well as they do. But Denville pays a disproportional amount to send our students to the same school, to But Denville pays a disproportional amount to send our students to the same school, to sit in the same classroom. So, I agree, it's frustrating that our students pay, and I don't know what the figure is, is it almost twice as much to have a student, sit right next to a student?
It was fairly significant.
Because it's based on ability to pay.
Well, it's also based on your house values, too, the property tax, so you have your demographics in the different towns, and...
But it's not, it's not just that, it's, it should be based off of the populations that we're sending to the district, and it's not. It's based off of the fact that Denville has a disproportionate share of the total amount, not based off of what our home values are, not based off of anything else. They take their budget, they divide it by whatever the amount is, and we get the disproportionate share.
And I think we'd have to, I mean, we could very well go and speak to the high school, they could explain it to us much better, but I think you'd have to advocate at a level above them to try and get it changed. And I believe it's the total value of our town versus the total value of other towns, and that's how they come up with the shares.
Right, that's exactly how they do it.
Well, that doesn't make it okay, and...
No, it's not that it's okay.
But our value went up.
I agree, I'm not, I'm not, we can say it's above them, I would think that...
This past budget cycle...
Well, what town has the most students in the school?
Long Island.
And Burton County, there's regional districts that have the same issue.
Because our tax system values this particular town.
In Morris County.
So, that's the same question.
Yeah, so I mean...
There's only somebody who feels like they're on the...
We used that property in Monroe, so bad, put it up in the high school.
I'm just saying, just like we explained, when there are things that are above us, you can come to us and complain about it, but it is an advocacy, like Dino's talking about, that school boards does when we advocate at a state level. I don't believe this is a state level, I believe it's a county level, but, I mean, that's where we start, have to start the grassroots conversation.
Combined with the high school.
And maybe it is. That's something you talk about when you go meet with Assemblyman Carroll and Senator Buco, because it affects us, and all of our constituents.
I mean, that's a good point. We can be here to listen, we can be here to answer as many questions as we can, but at the end of the day, we probably do this turn around and advocate as much as we can.
Isn't if we looked at the tax bill, do they break it out, the regional ones?
They do.
Yes, they do.
Which is, in fairness to, I'm not even gonna say fairness, 'cause I don't wanna defend anybody, the, there is a lot of folks that I've spoken with who didn't understand there is a difference between the two. And, you know, I think we've been very, very clear, again, as somebody who likes to think that he pays attention to what's going on around him, you know, I didn't hear a whole lot of what was going on with the high school district. And, you know, a lot of people that I spoke with didn't have a clearer understanding of the fact that there are two separate budgets, and two separate groups, and two different boards, and so on and so forth, and that, you know, although what we did had one impact, what the high school did had a different impact.
And we had some conversations with the town, and they were very receptive to that, you know, it's not the tax collector's job necessarily to parse out why your tax bill went up or where it went, but at the same time, you should, if you're giving out that kind of information, parse out the difference between the Denville K-8 district and the high school district. If you're going to say that, you know, your taxes went up because of schools, then explain to people, you know, what that means.
Well, yeah, and I felt like it was a little bit of misinformation, and maybe I'm a little bitter at the moment about it, because of the people I've spoken with, and understand some of the impact that some people have gotten. It's a big deal.
So, do we believe, as a board, that this was a unique year because of the reevaluation, and that in future years' budget cycles, the way we present our budget is the most clear and concise we can be, and it was just in this particular year? Because nobody really knew, if you were an average home before, what you were gonna be after the reevaluation, and how do you present that in a single slide, page, handout?
Well, if you took the, if you took the correspondence we all got today...
Yeah.
As a good example, I mean, that particular instance, that person was way below the average.
Right.
So, on the reassessment, they moved up closer to the average. So, they saw exactly what the town was describing, and they figured out, you know, it's a condition, why this is, you know, they, so no, I mean, our numbers didn't affect that. In other words, what we, I think what we presented was absolutely factual, I mean, because I don't think it was misleading in any way.
Right.
So, my, my question is a different question, which is that, is this board willing to petition and send, Dino, after the high school district, A, to agree to a reformulation, and then, B, to go after the county, or the state, or whomever it should be, to ask that it be reevaluated, so that district can, Denville can, the Denville district can pay its proportionate share to the high school district, as opposed to, I think what we all, I don't speak for anybody, but what I consider to be disproportionate?
Well, I don't think we, as a board, should send Dino as the spokesperson for the board to the high school personally. I don't want another school or the town telling us how to run our school, so I don't think we should tell the town or another school how to run their schools. I think we, as tax-paying citizens of this town, have a right to write them, just like everybody in the community has a right to write us. That's me, I don't want one district telling another district.
I think this is a unique situation. Again, I'm for our board speaking to that board and advocate, asking them to advocate with us that we look for a newer approach on their funding, so that it is proportionate based across the sending districts. I'm not saying they have to change anything, or tell them how to change it, but they should be in agreement that one town shouldn't be responsible for the lion's share in comparison to the others. And I'm asking that, we ask Dino to, to send a nicely worded letter, or go to their meeting, and ask them to agree with us, to stand behind us as we go and try to get this ballot for our taxpayers.
I don't think, you know, that the role of the board would be like a unified approach. I mean, the property taxes are an issue, I've talked about it, for our district, as well as the Morris Hills Regional District, which actually is two high schools, it's not just, you know, one high school. I think you have to approach it as a, as a citizen. Go up there with a bunch of people to the public portion of the meeting, or you can even start out with talking to Michael Bertram on the phone, you know, he used to be on our, our board here, and I'm sure they've had discussions on it in the past up there.
And their meeting...
You know, and I know, you know, probably a pretty complicated formula to, to have some equity, but I'm sure a town like Wharton would get, you know, to have some parity with what you pay per student, that they'd be paying more, and I'm sure their, their board members on that Board of Ed would strongly object to having their, their taxes go up real, real high, so...
Yeah, I mean, getting that board to move when the Denville board members are probably a minority, because I think we only have two representatives on a nine-person board, I think, and their meeting next month, they don't meet this month at all, their meeting next month is not on our meeting night, so any of us would be free to go up and speak with them.
When is that?
Their meeting, according to their district website, is August 29th, at 7 p.m.
So, is there any strong opinion about approaching that board as our board, or it sounds more like approaching that board as individual citizens of the greater whole?
I am in favor of the individual citizen approach.
I am too.
Barb, any thoughts, sir?
Well, at your next board-to-board, I would add it to the agenda, because you have all the sites there, right?
Yeah, I think that's a great...
That's a great, that happens to conversation, absolutely.
But it has been discussed before in previous years, and the majority of the districts are happy with the way the form over...
Well, I was gonna say, look, at the end of the day, why would anybody but, anybody but else, us move on this? Because they're, they have a bit of a free ride, right?
Of course they do.
So...
Well, that's what I'm saying, and if, if that board is, is not gonna take action, then we should know that. If they're not gonna see an equitable distribution of the liability to all the districts, then I think that's incumbent on them to say that.
And Miami...
And we should go as individual citizens, but I think they should stand up and say, no, Denville, you're gonna pay a disproportionate share.
Regarding the average metrics that are produced annually, they're averages, so they're accurate, and we stand behind what was published, so...
Are you talking about our...
Yeah, I mean, everything, we try to be open and, you know, forthright on this stuff, it's, it's based on what they told us.
Do you agree? I don't see anything in our numbers or our presentation of our numbers, would you, is there anything you would consider changing, based on where we've been this year?
No, not at all.
The average is a decrease, but individuals may be swinging...
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people had a tax increase because of the reevaluations.
My understanding is that it was a third state about the same, a third went up, a third went down, and I know people who fell into all categories.
You know, if you looked at that email I forwarded you from Steve Ward...
Yeah.
And you looked at that picture, our numbers are almost, I mean, this isn't exact, right? Because it's three, the person's 308,015, and 405, 405,016. It's pretty close to our 15 and our 16 average. Our taxes, the taxes for this, this particular person, for our school, went down $40, and the taxes for the regional district went up about $100.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, we were saying, you're gonna get about a $45 tax decrease, and that's pretty close to what this says, because this is not exact, again, because it's not the exact numbers, but, I mean, so our numbers are pretty on. I think, the only thing, and I was talking about it to Dino, and I know verbally I said this, and I know on the, on all of our presentations, and every document, it says Denville K-8 School District. On one of the documents, I put another disclaimer, it said, reminder, this is only for the Denville K-8 School District. You still, there are other taxes, county, locals, regional. I'm gonna make sure that that statement's on all of our documents going forward. I don't know if that'll help or anything, but at least it'll point out that, you know, there are other taxes that you, that you go by, and this is a perfect example of how our numbers were right on, but your tax still went up because of revaluation and because of the other, the other pieces of your tax.
Right. And I agree, there's no, we should always try and point out over and over and over again that we are the K-8, and there are other school districts in your town. I think there's no harm in that, and, I mean, it, and I don't know, as the, you know, president of the board, if you'll respond to the, we've heard from one constituent, I mean, it is only last year where you could possibly, and I know in person, I'm pretty sure in person, we spoke about, the reevaluation put things, you know, you don't know if you were gonna stay the same. Even if everybody's taxes, if all the schools had zeroed, or whatever, if you happened to get reevaluated higher, your taxes would've gone up anyhow. It's very hard to know what was gonna happen, because there were several things in motion all at once. So, yeah, I think our documentation for a regular year is completely clear, in an odd year like last year was. I'm not sure, you know, save actually being at a presentation where you heard people talk about it, how to put enough in a one-page document.
And I think in addition to that, I think there were, outside of what, and I agree, I think we did what we should've done, and how we, I think it was worded well, and I think you, the disclaimers were there, and so on. I think that there was some misinformation that was out there, and I'm not saying it was purposeful, but it was certainly misrepresenting the actuals, again, mentioning that the school budget went up triple, or whatever, something, it was something, somebody mentioned in particular, but some other things I heard as well, that was self-serving to a certain degree, and the easy cop-out, and...
Well, I mean, this person states that we don't have a disclaimer on our slot.
You mean, about the reevaluation, or about the fact that...
Yeah, I think it's about the reevaluation.
We didn't really spend a lot of time talking about the reevaluation. I mean, we talked a little bit about the fact that the St. Clair's property came on the tax rolls, we talked about that.
But we wouldn't know.
But we, yeah, we don't, you're right.
It wasn't ready yet. Wasn't published yet.
It's not ready until probably April, like April.
It's the last minute, because we asked a lot, remember, we talked about the...
Not only that, but it's not even done, because people have the option to appeal.
It wasn't done, or it wasn't.
Yeah, you're right.
And an average is an average.
If I remember correctly, during the public presentation, excuse me, the, it was made clear at least once, and maybe two or three times, that this was just the portion of the budget that we were, that was attributable to the K-8 school. I remember, I distinctly remember hearing it at least once, and I'm pretty sure it was said...
Oh, yeah, I would agree with that.
So, I, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we as a, we as a board have misrepresented anything in this.
And even the document that was sent back to us clearly is labeled Denville K-8 Board of Education. Estimated tax impact for Denville K-8 School District. And we're very clear that we're a K-8.
So, we'll respond to this, for this letter, and...
I called, I called this person today, did not get an answer, so I left the message. She did call our office Friday, I was, I was out of the office, so I called today. I'll see if we can talk to her and see if it makes sense, but... Obviously, I mean, I wanna go on record, too, I mean, there's no way I wanna mislead people, or trying to do anything. Sometimes I think when you, when you try to be so transparent, people think you're hiding something for some reason, but we were as transparent as you possibly could be about it, step by step, explaining it, and I know verbally, at every presentation, I said that this is only for the Denville K-8 School District. There are other taxes you have, so...
Okay. Unless there's anything else anyone else would like to discuss, we will open up for comments one more time this evening.
That was something that Mike asked, but he's not here, so we can move it to the next one.
Okay. So, I will open up for public comment at 9:01 PM. Anything germane to the district, please post the podium and sign in. 9:01, I'll close for public session, public comment at 9:01 PM, and we'll open up for any additional board comments, if there are any. And if not, we do, are we done with executives?
Yeah.
Okay. So...
I'm going to go to the other one.
Thank you, all in favor?
Yay.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our meeting is finished at 9:02 PM, thank you, everyone.
No, I know where you're...